We should bless each other. I like you, you should bless yourself also. And you know, you will not be able to bless anyone in Japan. By giving us blessing, you will be heavily blessing. It will not be able to bless you. You will not be able to bless anyone.
Now, this is the last reading. It is a reading.
But I know you are not okay. And we will not be able to bless you. We are living in that eight days. Before that, I give Pranitha, who gave me privilege to come here and speak to you through the word. I want to also want to return my hands to those families who were poor and get me alive. My God, that is not good. My God, in these four days, I have been blessed. I have been blessed. I have been blessed. I confess that. I have been blessed. Yes. Will turn to our portion. My God, what do you think? Leviticus twenty-three. Let me see. I have no idea. This twenty-three chapter of Leviticus is the rehearsal of the motivating things. This is a lesson about the Lord. The Lord has taught us a lot of things. There are forty-three, forty-two verses. This is a prayer. And they talk about the feast. This is a prayer. We will learn about the feast. Of festival. The feast. In English, there is a feast means moshan, good food, high food, banquet. In English, feast, in Hindu, it is written as a feast. We will learn about it. Sometimes, at our marriage or any other birthday or anybody coming in our house, then we prepare good food, banquet. We will learn about this. We will celebrate it. Every day, he eat on the bowl. All the days, we have been blessed. But these feasts are different. This is a feast. These are first verse. These are gone, given, gone, appointed feast. We will learn about this. This is a prayer. He has been blessed. Before that, you should learn the calendar. This is a prayer. There are many calendars in the world. There are many different calendars. But this Jewish people, they have two types of calendar. There are two different calendars. First calendar, religious calendar. There are two different calendars. The second is a commercial calendar. There are two different calendars. And we also have very calendars. We have different calendars. Hindu calendars are different. Hindu calendars are different. Muslim calendars are different. Muslims have different calendars. Every religion, every religion, Dharma, they have their own calendar. There are different calendars. We follow English calendar. We follow English calendar. That's what we said today, is twenty-three years. We will learn about this. There is a college calendar, academy. There are different calendars. Start in the month of June, ends in the month of April. There are different calendars. There is a bank calendar. Banks have different calendars. Open calendars. No one has a calendar. But God's calendar is absolutely different. This is a calendar. God does not walk or do anything according to your calendar. You have different calendars. So, we should know his calendar. But we will not be able to bless him. Israel, as I said, there are two calendars. There are two different calendars. And this Bible is pertaining to the religious calendar. There are two different calendars. They are twelve months. Every month is of thirty-three days. So, their year is three hundred and sixty days. We will learn about this. Not three hundred and sixty-five days. We will learn about this. And their first month starts in the month of March, April. This is a calendar. Half March, half April. Half March, half April. Our first month is January. We will learn January. So, like Shabbat, what is Shabbat? Friday evening, six o'clock to Saturday evening, next day, six o'clock, Shabbat, they say. We will celebrate it. We will celebrate it. So, this is called religious calendar. This is a calendar. First month is half March, half April, first month for Abid. This is a calendar. We will celebrate it. And in chapter twenty-three, which we have opened in the Bible, has got seven feasts. We will learn about this. And you should know those feasts. We will learn about this. Whatever happened in the Israel's history, happened in the feasts. Even if Israel did something, it will happen in the feast. They have been given the feasts. Israel, these feasts are being given to Jews, Israelites, Arabs. This is a feast. We are new testament believers. We will not celebrate. We don't have any feast to celebrate. We will not celebrate. Christmas is not feast. Christmas is not a feast. So that we must celebrate. We will not celebrate. If you celebrate your birthday or anniversary or Christmas, it's not a sin. You have been blessed. We have only two ordinances. There are two different ones. One is baptism. Second is Lord's table. One is prayer. Baptism comes after salvation. Once in the water. But this balla, that is the Lord's table comes any day, any day, any day. This is a prayer. Every feast has got spiritual significance. We will learn about this. And Yahweh, God gave to Israel, Israelites, to follow, to have congregation, to have holidays on this feast. This is a prayer. And all these feasts are put in, in one person, and that person is Jesus Christ. This is a prayer. And in him, in Jesus, he also celebrates. We will learn about this. These are from the Jews. We are not Jews. We are Gentians. So, we are, we don't follow this feast. We will learn about this. This feast is completed in Jesus Christ. We will learn about this. And their blessing is our blessing. We will learn about this. Morning, I showed you one verse. Galatians, chapter six. And verse sixteen, verse six. One word is there. We are God's Israel. We will learn about this. We are Israel of God. We will learn about this. We are not Israeli. We will learn about this. God's Israel. This is a prayer. Means God's, Israel's blessings are your blessing, my blessing. This is a prayer. So, these feasts also are for them and they are for us also. We will learn about this. We will see the meaning of the feasts. We will learn about this. Very carefully read and write. Yes, number one. As we are read, verse two, these are God's appointed time, a feast. We will learn about this. And there is a rich blessing in these feasts. We will learn about this. If you study. Now, number one. What's five? Number one is Passover. In Hebrew, it is called Pesach. In Hebrew, Pesach. Telugu is similar, little bit similar. In Telugu, it is written the same. Pesach means Passover. In English, it is Passover. It comes on this Thursday, means last Friday. Oboo Friday, and this Easter means the Pesach. We will learn about this. Good Friday, Easter, we will celebrate it. What is the spiritual significance? Delurance and redemption. That is our salvation. So, that this, uh, chart. Yes. Look there. Don't look to me. I am not so handsome. Like this, Manora. Manora. Keep it like this. There are many pictures like this, but for you, so that from all the way from there, you can see therefore a simple one I have prepared. We will learn about this. Where do you find this Manora? In the tavernacle. In the temple. It is one piece of gold. It is not attached. But attached or fit pieces and then prepared for, no, it is one piece of gold everywhere. We will learn about this. You know this tavernacle? Three parts. One, two, three. First part was, um, that is a four yard. And second is a holy place. And there, holy of holy. And there were seven furnitures. There are seven different tables. Here, table also, this is furniture. As soon as you enter from the first curtain. There will be burnt offering altar. Then, there will be eleven. Branson eleven, they are very huge. In that, there are water. When the belly, that is arpan, animal is cut. Before going into the holy place, yajah, which he has to clean himself, by the water. Then, inside he comes, holy place. There are three furnitures. Number one is. Because here. And there are seven lamps. Because he has to serve, he has to minister in the light of the Manora. We will learn about this. Outside, there is a sunlight. He can, he can work, he can serve. But once he entered into that second room. There is no light like this. He has to depend upon this light. And this light spiritually says, says that Shakaana glory. The light of the world. So, when we serve the Lord, Lord, in the temple, here also, in our life also, we should serve in the light of this world. We will learn about this. This also speaks seven churches. This also speaks seven spirits. And the middle, one is Jesus Christ. And from Jesus Christ, life and light is being given to others six. So, in the holy place, this is furniture. Second furniture is table here. On the table, there were six, six, twelve bread. And the yajah, the priest, he has to eat those breads. Dry breads. Steal breads. One we passed, so stale bread, very hard, very dry, but he has to eat. There is no water, coffee, milk, he can be mixed with water and then eat. He cannot throw it here and there also. He cannot put in a pocket and I will go home and then the home I will take. He has to eat those twelve breads. So, he used to eat up to here. So, when he goes home, do you think he will have an appetite to eat other things of the world? So, this speaks that this bread is this living bread. If you eat so much water of God in the house of the Lord, full up to here, then you will not have any desire, any appetite to eat outside food, worldly desire, media and other people. We will learn about this. One more furniture was there. And Dhupavedi, incense altar. Two, three, five. And inside are two furnitures. Ark of the Lord. And incense altar. Incense altar near the ark. In the most holy place. Two furnitures. Ark of the Lord. It is a holy of holy place. There was a mercy seat. And mercy, mercy, we have seen, priest goes there, teeth is fingered and put blood on mercy seat. This mercy seat means Jesus Christ. Father looks, the blood means to Jesus. Therefore, we are saved. It is the most important thing. And it shows, it indicates you also. How? It was made of wood. That wood was a cactusious or shifting wood. That tree is not used anywhere. And people also do not eat that leaves. That tree's wood is only used for one part of a sun, that is a fire. That is your description, my description. There is nothing good in us. We are only, one benefit is that that we should be burned into the hell fire. But he brought you from places. Oh, the foundation of the world, he chose you. And inside, outside, he put, or it was overlaid by gold. Because Bangar is God's nature. So, after salvation, you should be filled inside, outside by God's nature. If there is another nature reflecting that you are not saved. Somehow, should be changed. And the repentance changes our mind. And by the blood, we are washed. This is everything is in tavernacle, mosaic tavernacle. Same thing was in Jerusalem temple. We are taking only one furniture, at all, one. And this is, they call Manora. I went to Israel, those who go to Israel, they bring this much pieces and keep in a showcase in the house. While looking to that vestu, you learn so many things. We don't make any pooja. We get meaning, spiritual meaning. This is Leviticus twenty-three chapter. Seven feasts of Yahweh. And first one, we saw Passover. In twenty-three and verse five, Leviticus. What is Passover, you know very well. Our mind goes to Exodus twelve. Last day in the Egypt. Tomorrow, tomorrow, oh Moses, come here. Tomorrow, you go. Take your hand, buckeye, donkey, monkeys or swan, whatever, take it and go, cannot from this place. He was very happy. But God told Moses to do one thing. One thing is Passover. This indicates Jesus Christ. Come to the Exodus chapter first. We know this story. But certain things you should know. On tenth day. Twenty-twelve chapter and verse twelve-three. Tenth day, everyone will bring one, 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 one lamp according to family. Then, verse six, up to fourteenth day, we should not do anything, keep like that, mean ten and fourteen, four days, that lamp, keep in the house. Yes, we will do this, they have to apply the blood. Remember, I told you, as long as that blood is in the cattora, that vessel, it will remain there only. You have to dip and apply. So, when you repent or believe, actually, you should ask the Lord, wash me by thy blood, this should be our prayer. Now, how they have to eat? Should not boil in the water. This is the picture of Jesus. Jesus was not boiled in the water. He was fried. So, because of his agony, uh, we are saved. And that lamb, that flesh, we have to eat with bitter subject, bitter vegetable. It means Paschak. And further, it is said, what should be eaten, what not should be eaten. Verse nine says, these thoughts walk in a man. This means, mundy, the head, leg and intestine. This, the moon, this head means our thoughts. And then leg, feet means our walk. And intestine, you know, parts means inner man. The three things are there. Therefore, in balla, when we take that bread as a flesh of the Holy Jesus Christ. We are cleansed. This is a Passover lamb. Jesus became a Passover lamb for us. This feast is over. On the calendar, two thousand and span. But still, it is going on. Any puppy, if he comes to the first Passover, he will be saved. This is the beginning of the Christian life. Now, second. Second feast. Verse six. Twenty-three, six, Leviticus. This is unliving bread feast. What does it speak? What is the spiritual significance? Separation. And it will come on thirty, this month, thirty, month three. From the Passover, six days is continues. This is our sanctification. Holy life. And many churches, this second feast, unliving bread, this feast regarding this, nothing is taught. The pulpit, pastor never speaks regarding sin. He never spoke regarding adultery. Repentance. This means are not heard nowadays from the pulpit. This is becoming dead, 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 dead. This, the significance is our balla. Breaking bread. This is the spiritual meaning. After this Passover. That is after salvation. Holy life starts. In other word, it is called sanctification. You must know this. Don't be, don't depend upon your son, yes, I was saved, uh, ten years back, fifteen years back, finished and saved. You will get strength and power and holiness. But this night is the most important light. See, in John three-three, everybody knows.
But go on changing, transforming.
Mari rupantharu kondudi, anraivadindi.
That is this.
Adi idi.
That is this fist.
Idi pongani rotella.
By balla, you are transformed.
Mari balladvara nu rupantharu kondutunna.
By balla, you will get strength and power and holiness.
Niyaka balladvara, neevo, balan, nee parishuddha thirupundukutunna.
But this knife is the most important life.
Aite ee jivitamu, chala pravukkumani jivitamu.
See, in John three-three, everybody knows.
Ayyaano modu modu pratyavatjaitesu.
To be a demon, Jesus said.
Nikodemo esu chepadu.
Or be, oh nikodemas, he was a great teacher, you should be born again.
Oh nikodemo, neevo tirigi jenminchariyajepad.
If you are not born again, you cannot, cannot, cannot enter into the kingdom of God.
Neevo tirigi jenmincharatleide, devudi rajchinlu pravesinsaledujepad.
Born again, not unarjanma, reborn.
Mari unarjanma kadu tirigi jenminchuta.
Unarjanma idea, isn't that religion?
Itara matallu, unarjanmagurinchina, visharanu.
This janma, I am a man.
Aanuga, neenu manishini purishundu.
When I will die.
Nenjanpaithavada.
Cockroach.
Neenu vakka bodhinkaravada.
When that cockroach died.
Abra kaaproth, bodhinkarjanpaithavada.
Buffalo.
Neenu dunnapodhinaipada.
Then took a big.
Aa neenu pandalguvada.
Any idea, anything they say.
Aa yedukuttustha, aadaiipada.
Oh, Bible says.
Bible achundu.
Man has to die once.
Manishudu vakka saare mudhipundadi.
And after death, judgment.
Aa tarvada tipu.
No unarjanma.
Unarjanma yedu.
Anything they say.
Yedene chepastha.
Bible says, born again.
Aa baschundukadu chaptundu tirigi jenminchar.
This is called regeneration.
Adi tirigi nothamuka jenminchuta.
Salvation.
Danine rakshana.
It also called conversion.
Manamudharati maarpu ankodasam chaptam.
Do you know why God called you again?
Iyaka, atova ni devu, nee vilichni, kendi chedad, thesa.
Because you are sinner.
Enikantene, paavuvi.
Because you repented for your sin.
Neevo paavum, unithumai bascharthaapadu.
These are things correct.
Imanikka, nizumai.
But you are chosen for verse twenty-nine, three twenty-nine.
Aite yerevi tomidavachinana, neen, enikopadavu.
John three twenty-nine.
Yohano modu yerevi tomidavavachinu.
One word, only one word I want to bring, but really.
Ayyaka vakka padanani chappanukunana, mottunchavachinu. Pendlikumar. Pend.
Is it, is there word bride?
Pendlikumar.
Pendlikumar is bride. Ah, you have been born again, three-three, or verse twenty-nine.
Aa pendlikumarthe.
Ah, three-three experience.
Aa modu modu anbhamu.
That is born again.
Adi tirigi jenminchunbhamu.
Why?
Enigani.
He want to make you a twenty-nine bride.
Aa pendlikumartha ga cheyalanee, aynasastunna.
Remember this thing.
Iwishaanu nee vyaavunchukandi.
Day by day.
Kapati, dinadinamu.
You are shaping, you are transforming yourself to bride.
Neevo vadugaa pendlikumartha ga, dinadinmu, machabardutunna.
And you are his bride.
Neevo aynaka boduvaayindam.
You are engaged, espoused.
Neevo pradanam chaymadavu.
A ring is given to you.
Neeku vakka ungaramevupadindi.
So, this would be husband.
Kabai, kabaiyabatha.
This bride room, Jesus.
Iyaka pendlikumar the esu.
Doesn't want, this wife, would be wife should be full of disease.
Iyaka nakukabaiyabaria, samastaro galto, ningilindale, neemko.
Ovid, Ovid.
Covid thandu, covid raavariyanankod.
In ICU.
ICU unarayadu, kodankod.
No, husband will expect this.
Ee bhatta kodalankod.
So that husband will not expect.
Kamati, a bhatta kodatani, o- ockod.
He should, she or he should be becoming like, that is the bride.
Aa ame vadugaa pendlikumartha ga unaray.
How it will become?
Evidinka pendlikumartha ga markundu.
Second face.
Redavu panduka.
Unliving.
Pongani rotella panduka.
In Leviticus, it is said.
Alevi kaandamla, edunka chachinu.
Whatever you bring, your offering, there should not be eleven.
Aa meero ye arpanathisukchina, adi pongantheenadu.
In your prayer, in your worship, there should not be eleven.
Aa mari pongiru, edi kuda unnavadu.
Nobody is eleven?
Aa pongiru eighty.
We have seen.
Aa vesadharna.
This duplicate scene.
Mari nakili.
Secondary.
Aa redavu taragati, samanichchadi.
Nakili, nakili is a good word, nakili, I remember one example.
Aa nakuka udhahnumuthus.
What is nakili?
Nakili ante yedu.
I said, Satan does whatever is duplicate of the father and the son.
Aa sadhana, sanjainadu devu, kumadainadu devu, eechastha, daniki nakili chastam.
God's people, there are true people, believers.
A devu, prajalu, nizumaina viswaasunu, nizumaina prajal.
Antichrist of Satan, he has prepared his nakili believers.
Aa sadhana du, ancha krishnu, tana swanta nakili viswaasunu kuda payajese.
There was a widow.
Vakka vidhuralundu.
And she has one boy, one son.
Vidhuraliku kumadunna.
Very poor.
Chala pheedaavu.
But he was, that boy was very studious, hard worker.
Aite ayakpilavadu, bhaaga kastabadi, tattungaravadu.
Somehow completed education.
Chala guna chadu buginchaya.
He was searching John.
Bacha, budjavukostu.
This is the true story in this Chicago, America.
Chicago, America, this, nizumaina, urthaarthu.
And he already, he used to see newspaper.
Prati roju kuda vaatapatrala, hoodu undavu.
Where I can be fitted.
Aa neenu, 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 nakku, yedu javukundarutunna, ayni, vaata pratikalavadu.
He was ready, he was ready to do any type of job.
Ye panaina, ye ujavukchayavarkana, sidangavana.
He was both were hungry, no bread.
Edigante, talli, tarukui, akari kaundu, akari kuychavadi.
One day, he saw one advertisement in the paper.
Vakka patrakalu, vakka advertisement, prakradanju.
Wanted this man.
Aa iyaka, idvanti, manishudu kaavali.
He said, he went to the manager.
Aa ventane, a manager kaalsadu.
But that was a zoo.
Adi vakka zoo, jantu, jantu pradastan sala.
You know zoo.
Jantu pradastan sala, meethes.
That is a tiger and the elephant and so many cages out there.
Aa patravattha bone lo, bone lo, simhum, unka bone lo, kothi, chimpangi, vanyavat.
The manager said to him.
Aka manager, ah, yogurtanadu.
Are you ready to do any type of work?
Neevo ye panchayavarkana, sidangavu.
He said, yes, 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 I'm ready.
Aavandavu, avanavu, ye panchayavarkana, sidangavu.
And manager said.
Abra manageranadu.
See, that cage is empty.
Chudu, aka boneu khaligaundu.
There was our chimpanzee.
Akrapa, chimpangi unnedu.
Sorry, gorilla.
Gorilla unnedu.
The gorilla dead.
A gorilla, chalipaidi.
You will have to come, you have to come one hour early.
Nu vakka gantam undavachi.
Our, our people will use your dress, beauty parlor type, all lifting, everything.
Mari nu prati roju vakka gantam unduravadi, ochinavanteli, neeku manchimakupchastha.
They will put, they will put whole address.
Neeku vakka gorilla vashtralu daristha.
And you will be inside before gate open.
Aa mari pradastaniki gate openchayukundu, bone laginbha.
You have to act like that gorilla.
Nu gorilla, yedu kana, natistundu, gorilla, oray, natinchalu.
Nobody should be suspicious.
Yavaru kodan, anamalunchukodu.
He said, SSS for everything.
Aa prati daniki, avanavu, chepesam.
Because he wanted bread now.
Enikantene, mari daniki, rotikaavadi, chala aharundavadi.
He went rejoicing to his mother.
Kamati, parikuthundu, santoshundu.
Next thing he came earlier.
Mari tarvathu ujavakani, kattaraduchisadu.
Those people put that positive gorilla.
Ayyaka gorilla vashtralani, kuda daripadisadu.
Sent inside.
A bone lu pampicha.
Knock the door.
Aa dharmisasadu.
And he has to act like gorilla.
Ippudo, athalu, gorilla laga, natinchari.
Make faces, run here, the summer sound, here, this and that.
Aa palteer vattali, avankali, ivanka, atparikattali, parikattali.
Catch this ring and jump here, jump there.
Aa mari prajalai veshai, pattkavali, atparikattali.
One month, two months, three months, nobody got down.
Aa okkadi, redanalu, arnalu aipaidi, yavaru kodan, anamalunchalidu, chimpangi, gorilla.
Next cage was lion.
Aa tarvada bone lo, neemo simhumundu.
And then cam, other, elephant, others.
Aa tarvada, vente, mari tarvada, meyukkudam.
Manager just took them and said, everything on my, on my everything.
Aa roju manager vachinu, aantapavundu, andar baane, mari itturbu, yala rakeshtnada, itta jantul, yala name chustamilevadu.
Both cush.
Aa itturbana, santoshigana.
One day, there was a holiday.
Vakka roju sela vachinu.
One's own children came in a line.
Mari chinnapillu, andar, kuda jantu pradastanu, chustanu, varuslu vachaya.
To see the zoo, animals.
Jantu pradastanu, jantul, justanu.
Yes, they are small, they were making faces, ha, 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 bo, bo.
Aa mari chinnapillal kaavatti, a jantul, nee mari, chist, chist.
He is there, he has to make.
Mari balni, alagala santoshpadali.
Throw in chocolate, so he has to take the chocolate and eat.
Aa mari balu, chocolate leesthe, cha, thiskunna, thakthana.
And do some acrobatic.
Mari, landi, a, 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 sarkas, a sarkasla, pattila.
He gets so many kiala.
Aa mari chala, attikaayidinesadu.
Attu ya.
Aa buntu, daga, chinesadu, attikaayidu.
What the parish was full.
What the parish, antani, diimai.
Now he cannot go.
Ippu, yavu, kadalledu.
But he has to please all, no.
Mari pillalu, santoshpadali.
He cannot sit in a corner.
Aa aynavu, kucholedu.
Then, as he jumped, he was trying to jump.
Mari, mari, pegaral kaavatti, legatadi, practice.
And he has to catch the ring.
Ayyaka, ringu patkavali.
And he jumped.
Ee bal, pegegri.
And could not catch the ring.
Ayyaka, ringu patkavali.
Directly fell into the next cage, lion's cage.
Ayyaka, ringu patkavali, aka, a bakaram bone lo, simhum, ante, thanka padpe.
And he saw the lion roaring.
Oh, simhu, gandu, gandu, ganjastundu.
And he forgot who is he, bachao, bachao, bachao.
Dani yevu, machpayadu, chal gorilla laga, kaapna rakshinchetti, rakshinchetti, nu kailasnada.
But what happened, you know?
Abra eedin, thesa.
On his shoulder.
Aynaku, puchamme.
I put his head.
Aa simhu, panchayesundu, chop, or me, ande.
Meerebe, nope, change.
Aapu, jamkavali.
Yedu fokus, yedu fokus.
Itturbu fokusai, nakili jantulai.
He, they were doubted, young soul, they were doubted.
Aar, ittukka, anamalunavu, simhanu, anamalunavu, gorilla, anamalunavu.
Life wise, believers are today.
Viswaasunu, kuda, evidika.
Nakili believer.
Nakili viswaasunu.
Beat and dare, beat and dare.
Aa gorilla, godumalu, gurgalu.
Both are growing.
Redu pillukunai.
But Jesus had prayed up to the harvest.
Aite pantak, vata kalu, varuku, agamani chepad.
So, whatever you do, nakili, it will be revealed one day.
Kapati, nakili ga, eevichastha, vakrojna, thibhitkavodu.
So do not have nakili pray, nakili worship, nakili preaching, everything nakili, nakili pray.
Aa nakili pradana, nakili aaradana, nakili bodha, dantaparikathodu.
There should not be any lemon inside.
Ee pongina, edi kuda unnavadu.
You know lemon, that east, pongsa.
Aa peppu pongutundu, east vesti pongutundu. Ah, it's not good, it's not good.
Cake, how cake is made?
My cake, I prepare it.
Or in a, one time, how they are made?
My shop, they prepare it. This one is east, it's east.
That baking powder is good, the material is pumped up.
They are not good.
And we ate it there.
Fun, they are.
Life was in our power, so many times being pumped up.
Ah, we, we put it in the water, we put it in the water.
He spoke anything?
Anything, we put it in the water.
This is the lemon coming up.
Ah, we put it in the water, it's not good.
God, what you should be hundred percent unleavened.
You, 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 you.
So, your word should be yes or no?
You, 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 you.
So, this is unleavened bread means, what is significance? Scientific.
So, if you put it in the water, it's not good.
Scientific life.
Ah, the.
Holy life.
It's not good.
Another meaning is bala.
Ah, it's not good.
Because we take part in the routine.
So, we, we put it in the water.
Now, third, third phase is in verse ten.
Ah, three years, three years. You, you, you. Then, when you go, you, you, you.
Then, ah, first fruits, ah, it is called fist of weeks.
Ah, the first fruit.
First fruit, fist of, fist of weeks, W W K, weeks. What is that?
Ah, 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 the first fruit.
Yes, and it comes on Sunday, the falling of the unleavened bread.
Put it in the water, the water, the first fruit.
What is the spiritual significance?
Ah, the first fruit.
For them, they have to be first fruit of their harvest.
Why, 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 why?
They have to show to the Lord.
Ah, we, we.
Agricultural fruits, agricultural honor, it is the, the, the meaning.
Ah, we.
On us, the spiritual meaning is resurrection.
We, we.
This third is first fruit.
Three, ah, the first fruit.
What's?
What's?
Who became the first fruit?
Ah, the first fruit.
Ask anything, it's serious. Jesus, yes, come to the first Corinthians.
Corinthians.
You must know the verses.
I don't know.
I think you know the Bible, Bible is there in the house.
In the Bible, ah?
Or Quran, yeah?
Quran, ah?
Anything they read, ah, thirteen, eighteen.
Ah, TV, ah?
See, see, they were, they were suffering. Because of that, no us, you find.
Ah, the first verse.
Ah, first Corinthians, chapter fifteen.
Corinthians, mother, brother, brother.
Search and tell me.
Ah, what is it? Twenty-three.
Twenty-three, twenty-three.
Twenty-three years.
First fruit, Christ.
First fruit, Christ.
Christ was resurrected, today he is, Christ was resurrected from the dead.
Ah, the first fruit.
Yeah, and therefore, he is the first fruit, we are second fruit.
So, ah, the first fruit, we have two.
He was resurrected, so I also will be resurrected.
Ah, the first fruit, so I will be first fruit.
So, according to the order, it is said, according to the order.
Ah, the.
One, two, three, four, five, like that, then maybe it will be resurrection.
Ah, the.
But remember, there are only two resurrections.
Ah, it's like.
First resurrection, second resurrection.
Ah, the first fruit.
That is the first resurrection.
Ah, the first fruit.
Then, at the end, that is after the millennium, there will be second resurrection.
Ah, the first fruit.
All from the Adam, all will be raised, resurrected, and they will face the judgment.
Ah, ah, ah.
So, this is third, that is the resurrection, remember this thing.
Ah, we, we.
But one important verse for us regarding this resurrection, I want to show you.
Ah, the first fruit. We, we.
Romans, chapter eight.
Romans.
And verse eleven.
Ah, the first verse.
Underline, mother, contest.
Ah, this is. Ah, we, we.
Very big words.
Ah, the first verse. Ah, eleven.
Now, what is the meaning?
Ah, the.
Now, see the meaning.
Sure, ah?
The power of resurrection.
Ah, the.
By the same power, Jesus was born.
Ah, the.
By the same power, he let bullet kill kangari.
Ah, the.
By the same power, he conquered death.
Ah, the.
By the same power, he was resurrected.
Ah, the.
And by the same power of resurrection, he was ascended.
Ah, the.
Same power of resurrection is given to you.
Ah, the.
Inside, in you, there is a power, and that is a resurrection power.
Ah, the.
This power is more powerful than nuclear power.
Ah, the.
It is depend upon your faith.
Ah, we, we.
We are afraid of Corona.
Ah, we, we.
Wash hand, distance Corona.
Small Corona.
I will die, this fear is there in every heart.
Ah, we, we.
Opposite, opposite of faith is fear.
Ah, the.
Now, what is faith?
Ah, the.
No, if I touch Corona, Corona will die.
Ah, the.
That is faith.
Ah, the.
Now, we say, no, no, it is impossible, okay, I am very small, and they are ordering.
Ah, I, I.
No, Bible says, the faith which was going to pick up all, same faith is given to you and me. They were great men, they had a big faith, I have only one kilo, half a kilo of faith, not like that.
Ah, we, we.
You have been given that faith.
Ah, the.
But you are not using that faith.
Ah, the.
Only Bible study is sitting and going.
Ah, Bible study.
What is faith, you know?
Ah, the.
There is a button.
Ah, the button.
I want light.
Ah, I.
I have to get up.
Ah, I.
From the chair.
Ah, I.
Go to the, that keep board.
Ah, I.
Press the button.
Ah, I.
I get light.
Ah, I.
I get fan.
Ah, I.
Supply is there.
Ah, we.
This supply is there.
Ah, we.
Abundant supply is constantly there.
Ah, we.
But what I have to do?
Ah, I.
I should not go and bring one thing, oh, give, 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 no.
Ah, I.
I have to do action.
Ah, I.
That is called active faith.
Ah, the.
What, what action?
Ah, the.
I have to get up and just, just press the button.
Ah, I.
That is faith.
Ah, the.
Therefore, you don't do that faith, therefore, you do not get anything.
Ah, the.
Faith is a faith wire, faith is one faith wire.
Ah, the.
There is no wire, how can I get light?
Ah, I.
Big bulk, nice supply, everything is there.
Ah, we.
So, develop your faith.
Ah, the.
And faith, there are many examples.
Ah, the.
I will give one example of the.
Ah, the.
One day, he wanted to go abroad.
Ah, he.
From Mumbai.
Mumbai.
And, ah, suppose, there is twelve o'clock noon, suppose, that there is a flight.
Ah, ah, ah.
Three hours before we are to go there.
Ah, we.
Because of this other checking and.
Ah, we.
But he was already late.
Ah, I.
Because of prayers and other things.
Ah, we.
Go to airport, it was two hours.
Ah, I.
So, you decide when to start.
Ah, the.
And there was not, there was only one hour.
Ah, I.
These elders, they said, don't go, like might have gone, it is, ah, no use to go there.
Ah, we.
Oh, he said, no, go, I will build that plane.
Ah, no, no, no.
The plane went, took off exactly.
Ah, I.
After one hour, there was a lady, very rich lady.
Ah, I.
She, she remembered one thing.
Ah, I.
Her very most precious pearl emerald bag, pouch, remains somewhere on the air Bombay airport. Then, she went to the, ah, pilot.
Ah, I.
And married everything.
Ah, I.
I am ready to pay any amount.
Ah, I.
Turn the plane again.
Ah, I.
No, 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 it is not possible, they said.
Ah, I.
Allowed to do that.
Ah, I.
You too, I will give own compensation, all money, I will return, whatever.
Ah, I.
I forgot my great big most precious pouch, the bag on the toilet somewhere there.
Ah, I. Ah, I.
Somehow, plane was diverted, brought back.
Ah, I.
Landed, and she want the bag.
Ah, I.
On whom they might have told that thing.
Ah, I.
And the. Touch the airplane, air, the road.
Ah, I.
And he got that, he got that plane.
Ah, I.
Went to America.
Ah, I.
Oh, it was surprise.
Ah, I.
That is called faith.
Ah, the.
I will get, once, I will get that.
Ah, I.
Some examples are like that.
Ah, I.
Faith is a gift.
Ah, the.
And you have to use it.
Ah, I.
Faith without work is dead.
Ah, I.
If I do not get up and press the button, it is dead, my faith is dead.
Ah, I.
Therefore, this power of resurrection should be there in you.
Ah, the.
Now, fifth.
Ah, I.
I'm sorry, fourth.
Ah, I.
Fourth, ah, fist is, come to the Leviticus twenty-three, and verse sixteen, one-six.
Ah, I.
Fifteen verse is seven, shapa.
Ah, I.
Seven, sevens are forty-nine.
Ah, I.
Means fifty.
Ah, I.
So, on fifty, this fist comes.
Ah, I.
Pentecost.
Pentecost.
You know what is Pentecost?
Pentecost.
Spiritual meaning is this, that in willing and fullness of the spirit.
Ah, 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 the.
And you are also Pentecostal.
Ah, you, you.
Don't figure out, see, 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 Pentecostal, Pentecostal man, Pentecostal.
Ah, I.
He who is born again, is Pentecostal.
Ah, I.
Because this is the Pentecostal, Holy Spirit comes and wells in us.
Ah, the.
That is a gift.
Ah, I.
So, you have two spirits.
Ah, I.
His spirit and your spirit.
Ah, I.
His spirit, Holy Spirit envelops and mix with your spirit.
Ah, I.
And then you learn his laws.
Ah, I.
You are governed by the Holy Spirit.
Ah, I.
It comes on twenty-ninth Monday.
Ah, I.
Now, first four are actually finished.
Ah, I.
There are seven fists.
Ah, I.
Now, three are remained.
Ah, I.
Seven are already fulfilled.
Ah, I.
But these three, fifth, sixth, and seventh, last three, are to be fulfilled.
Ah, I.
It is fulfilled, but it will be fulfilled before your eyes.
Ah, I.
Now, which is that, fifth one.
Ah, I.
Come to the Leviticus again, twenty-three.
Ah, I.
And fifth one is eight, verse twenty-four. That, what, did you find the word trumpets?
Ah, I.
In Hebrew, it is said rosh hashanah.
Ah, I.
Fist of trumpets, or trumpet festival.
Ah, I.
What is the spiritual significance?
Ah, I.
Rapture.
Ah, I.
Going up.
Ah, I.
For them, they have to blow trumpets.
Ah, I.
First time I told that there is a, anyone called shofar.
Ah, I.
Out of his horn, these trumpets are prepared.
Ah, I.
They blow their trumpets.
Ah, I.
Today also they celebrate like this, blowing the trumpets.
Ah, I.
Even they put crackers when their dust gives.
Ah, I.
Like what, they blow the trumpet.
Ah, I.
It has more power.
Ah, I.
You know, the other religion people, they put shankar.
Ah, I.
There's that mantra.
Ah, I.
And that mantra is from the wings.
Ah, I.
They understand more.
Ah, I.
They put mantra in the house of.
Ah, I.
Well, ah, but that is evil mantra.
Ah, I.
By their words, they say, everything is, ah, 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 washed.
Ah, I.
I was in a college.
Ah, I.
Saint Bruce said, I was learning, in those days, typing.
Ah, I.
But early, very early, I had to go.
Ah, I.
So, six o'clock, please, all the shops, he is cleaning, from here, he is cleaning, and that dust, I had to go. And Saint Bruce said, there was a bitai, good one, great, nice bitai, little, little, you know, bitai.
Ah, I.
Sage was sitting there.
Ah, I.
In front of there was a cow.
Ah, I.
Then a cow began to pour urine.
Ah, I.
And this sage, another.
Ah, I.
You came there.
Ah, I.
And it took that.
Ah, I.
Pure, holy.
Ah, I.
Went to Rishon.
Ah, I. Ah, I.
Then he went there.
Ah, I. Ah, I. Ah, I.
Ah, I. Nice.
Ah, I.
Muthra, sah, usnah, holy, dear.
Ah, I.
This is ideology, only evil spirits, ideology.
Ah, I.
Ah, Satan is like that only.
Ah, I.
But for us, this trumpet has what spiritual meaning?
Ah, I.
You must know it, there is a trumpet sound.
Ah, I.
Anytime.
Ah, I.
You are really not ready.
Ah, I.
Jesus is coming on the north, in the way here.
Ah, I.
And there is a, there is a, there is a signal also for us.
Ah, I.
And he will.
Ah, I.
That is the only hope that you will have.
Ah, I.
Now, when this festival come.
Ah, I.
This fifth one.
Ah, I.
In one month, September, September.
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 September, October.
All three, last three comes September, October, in a one month, three fists.
Ah, I.
Now, one clue I gave you.
Ah, I.
I don't say, it will happen.
Ah, I.
But I said, whatever happen, even the test of Israel, happen in these festivals.
Ah, Israel.
For example.
Ah, I.
Passover.
Ah, I.
When it happen?
Ah, I.
In the feast.
Ah, I.
Jesus died when the feast was going on.
Ah, I.
But that lamp, that lamp is already cut on cavalry.
Ah, I.
Ah, I. Jewish people, they did not understand the spiritual meaning.
Ah, I.
When he said, it is finished.
Ah, I.
The bell was torn.
Ah, I.
As before, it was supposed to seven o'clock meeting, then some brothers, they come and clean room, arrangements, chairs, this, mic, they do some service. Life was, those priests, they were there, three o'clock ready.
Ah, I.
They were also preparing other things.
Ah, I.
All of a sudden, three o'clock, there was a earthquake.
Ah, I.
And it revealed that darkness.
Ah, I.
A big noise was there.
Ah, I.
Because the lamp of God said, it is finished.
Ah, I.
And God answered, amen.
Ah, I.
And this bell was torn.
Ah, I.
And everybody was able to see what is there in the holy of police.
Ah, I.
They were also surprised.
Ah, I.
They did not understand the meaning.
Ah, I.
We are new, current people.
Ah, I.
We know Hebrew ten, nineteen.
Ah, I.
In his blood.
Ah, I.
He has prepared a new and living way.
Ah, I.
Where that way goes?
Ah, I.
The most holy place in heaven.
Ah, I.
Before the throne of God.
Ah, I.
This is been completed.
Ah, I.
Trumpet festival.
Ah, I.
Now, six.
Ah, I.
Six is a kilo.
Ah, I.
Same chapter, twenty-seven.
Ah, I.
Three.
Ah, I. Ah, I. Ah, I. Ah, I.
Twenty-eight. Twenty-eight, twenty-eight. Fist of prize, shit, be of atonement.
Ah, I.
And you know what is that atonement?
Ah, I.
Now, what is that atonement?
Ah, I.
Atonement means nothing, two proverbial sins under the blood.
Ah, I.
Now, see the meaning.
Ah, I.
Priest is there.
Ah, I.
You know this dress is there.
Ah, I.
He has taken the blood.
Ah, I.
Come to the holy place.
Ah, I.
He has to go inside.
Ah, I.
The curtain is there.
Ah, I.
This is called well, P E I N.
Ah, I.
Second is called curtain.
Ah, I.
And first one is called curtain.
Ah, I.
Last time I told you how they go.
Ah, I.
Ah, I. Please move the curtain.
Ah, I.
But here, in time, there is no one to do.
Ah, I.
No, somebody is there.
Ah, I.
He himself, he himself has to go.
Ah, I.
How he moves?
Ah, I.
Born, with, with, born with the blood.
Ah, I.
And on past, prostet.
Ah, I.